Can you just read the order?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
HRZ is not going to be here, we'll move that to Mark. So Doug, do you want to roll?
Want to call a roll?
Oh, roll call, sorry about that.
Nelson Marie Knatt.
Yeah.
Robert Hammond.
Here.
Larry Seer.
Here.
Venus Shade.
Here.
Jim Steele.
Here.
Aaron Wilson.
Here.
Bill Wilson.
Here.
Doug?
Evening.
Evening.
Everybody look over the paperwork that I left this last time. I think you mentioned to be copies made for everybody.
You need the council members.
Yes. Okay, they have a list of things that I mentioned, but this is about having campfires along a river. And the whole area on that south side is yellow on the zoning map, all shows R1. Well, obviously, the land on the other side of the parallel can't be used for R1. Flood zone, no utilities, and so it's best suited for its highest and best use campsites. We've only got 10, no plans of creating any more. And part of the ambiance of camping along a river, of course, having a campfire. Well, here we are with the ordinance stating that there is no open burning. A question was raised, what about, maybe it's a cooking device? If there's a wheel or a closure or a fire ring or something with a grill top, it's a cooking device. However, the question is, I think Rex mentioned, well, you can only use charcoal or charcoal or gas. It doesn't say, I've read the ordinance, it doesn't mention that, but no bonfires, it does say. I think that a fair compromise, a fair consideration is with the rules that we've made for the river campsites, pretty stringent rules on what they may or may not do. And at this point, we're starting out all new with maybe only one or two returning. We're starting out with being picky about who's there. So if they're going to go by the rules, they will be there. We run a tight ship, and I think a campfire along the river is just everything that somebody wants when they're down there. It's part of the process. They're clearing the area 10 feet around the outside, keeping any fire pit at least 15 feet away from the camper or any other combustibles. And, you know, I have a list of things, I think Kim's going to make some copies there. But to that, I wanted to add about the zone R1, not usable for R1, and then it's isolated, separated by the highway. So two things we could do is, one would be either a separate zoning, just for the parcel between the parallel and the river. I know we don't have any campgrounds in the borough, it's unheard of. But everybody else has got them, and they pretty much allow those things, campfires and so on. Also, we could relax the fire ban on that particular parcel. Just simply don't enforce it, relax it, or have an addendum or something authorizing campers to have a fire ring and a controlled fire, no bonfire. It could also be provisional, meaning as long as they toe the line, do what they're supposed to do, no problem. If you get out of hand, then there's problems. And we have a good many rules in the next pages regarding how fires can be, you know, how they have to be controlled and attended and so on.
I'm just, Joe Dubsen, still a part owner on property, and we've been down there for 20 some years. We've taken control of it, and I believe we just need a little variant saying that for campfires.
Any questions?
I guess just for councils, edification, the prohibition against open fires is in your codes ordinance. You have a fire prevention code, and there's, you know, prohibition against open burning outdoor fires. So that's what would probably have to be tweaked if council wants to do something. I mean, my initial thoughts would be if you want to address it, you could perhaps carve out some type of exception for licensed campground, since you do have like a provision in your ordinances to have licenses for campgrounds. So that would keep it, you know, pretty narrow as to where people could do it. So if council desires, I think, send it back to law and ordinance with instructions to, you know, explore the possibilities for changes to the open burning ordinance. But it's, you know, completely up to council how you want to handle it.
The other piece on this is, what are you doing for bathrooms down there? Because the borough ordinance says you have to have showers and bathrooms.
Yeah, well, we don't have any water, except by the river water, so we can't build any showers. The other thing would be plumbing, any kind of substructure plumbing would have to be drainable. It's a little complicated.
Right.
In the same way with putting anything else, sewer or electric or whatever. There are primitive sites, we've been running them as primitive sites. I think Venus asked last time about rents, we really don't know what they're going to be this time because of all the things that we're researching, you know, cost is cost. Any cost runs the price. And Karen, believe you, asked a question last time, did we know there was an ordinance beforehand? And I think I answered it somewhat, which was, we knew there was an ordinance in place. We signed a document agreeing, no abide by the ordinance. But we also knew that the heart of it wasn't intended for maybe our property per se. And I think it's just common sense probably, just to let us go ahead and have a few campsites with campfires. We're pretty tight managers, we don't let things get out of hand. I had one person that left their junk laying down there for, it was on her for months, and it's cleaned up now. And not returned, changed the locks.
So what's your take on this?
Well, I was meeting here tonight and was discussing, I understand he's going to where people like to have campfires. But also, I think it's on the third page here where it says no uncontrolled fires. All fires must be attended at all times. Okay to burn paper, but not garbage cans, out of the trash. No fire damage to trees or natural landscape. How is this going to be monitored? How is this going to be prevented from people doing that? That's one of my concerns. And also, your definition of controlled fire and fire department is quite two different definitions here, so.
Well, controlled meaning in one place, not fires just anywhere on the campsite. It's got to be in the fire pit, we require it's either like a truck wheel, which is pretty good sized steel, or a concrete fire ring, which they make out at the concrete place, or even concrete block if it's milked right. Stones, anything that contains the fire within.
Another concern of mine is the people live in the south side of Lewis Town, down in the South Grand Street, South GBI, the South Wayne Street area. Smoke rolls up out of there, so fire department, we get a call for smoke in the area. We're running over the place for if the fire isn't out there just because somebody smelled smoke from half a mile away.
Right.
Which is a lot of manpower, equipment, and wasting time and everything else.
Yeah, I, hard to believe that they would see and smell smoke from that far, you know, as far as just a small campfire. I understand what you're saying. Well, we do monitor that campsite, you know, we police it, keep it gated. And we intend to paint purple the whole way around it, so that it's noticed to anybody thinking they're going to come in there and just sit down at a campsite and have a little fire, they're not going to do that.
How close to the river are these fountains?
Well, all within 100 feet, I'm going to say approximately.
Yeah, close.
Because, you know, the sites are wide, and they're only as deep as from the river to the road that goes downstream.
I think the issue, one of the issues is going to be fairness, that if, to all residents, so if you change this ordinance, it's going to affect everybody else in town, which I'm not saying council's going to do or not. I don't know, that's up to them. But then we have to take a look at the other ordinances in play here, like the sewer one and the shower one, the bathroom one, because that means we're going to have to adjust those too. Because that, those ordinances are in place, and they are a law, which means we have to go back and change those ordinances too. So is this going to be like an accordion effect where we change one, then we have to go change another, change another? We don't want to go through that route. So maybe this is something that, you need to identify all the ordinances you want changed to have that one campground.
Well, you asked about the sewer, we started on showers, but on the sewer, we provide one port-a-pot for the whole group.
That's not enough.
Not enough.
Most campgrounds, one for two.
I know that last year, several of the campers brought their own in, and I wasn't happy about that. So that's part of cleaning house and starting over again. If we have to have more than that, then we can arrange for more than that.
Yeah, most campsites have, two campers can share.
Right here.
The concern is with one, the last time that we saw rising water, when water was getting close to the port-a-pot, I lashed it down to trees. I thought it wasn't going to float off, it wasn't going to flood the area, so it wasn't going to move. But if I have five to do that with, that's a little different.
Looks, you find something?
Just right here, we talked about the law and the ordinance. Is this the right one, Caitlin?
I can't see it, it's not on the monitor.
Maybe they can blow it up for you.
Yeah, so that's about.
212? No, 213.
Oh yeah, I should paint that, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Roger, so I can get it on this side. See if you guys can see it back there.
Sorry about that.
Are any of the trailers self-contained?
Uh, yes.
I think there's really only two. There's only a few sites that are eligible for campers, novel tent. Some of them are too low, as we go further down, they are almost novel with the river. So the ones cleared out are tenting, tenting and picnicking only.
Now, you just said you're going from 10 to whatever.
Well, there's 10 total sites. The ones that are suitable for campers are four, five.
So you wouldn't need to acquire eight, or, okay, I got it.
Yeah, the other, the other lower sites were strictly for like family outings, but not camping. Not for campers or more.
Yeah, when you said tent, we were all thinking tent campers.
Sounds like that.
And the other thing is, we built driveway and infrastructure where the, where the sites were suitable for a camper of some sort. And we can't, there's nowhere else to build anything different, just the contour of the land and the elevation.
So it goes back to council, unless anybody else has anything you want to say? Anybody that, do you want to take it back to the law and ordinance committee next week, next, next month, and do a deep dive on it, find out what this possible solutions would be for the ordinance adjustment?
We'll have to, we can't just say, okay. Has to go through a law and order, has to go through our solicitor. You're asking us to change codes, and that's not feasible, because if we change codes for you to have a fire, rest of the towns won't have a fire.
Yeah.
One fire.
How about a separate zoning for waterfront property, apart from R1?
How much would that cost?
Well, somebody said 1,000 or two.
Zoning change gets expensive, and there's issues come up about spot zoning that people can challenge, so.
Yeah.
I prefer not to go that route if possible, but it's up, you know, once again, it's up to council.
There is no zoning specifically for this use, you know? It's a, it's a, it's sort of a standalone property with a standalone highest and best use. Nothing else in the borough is anywhere close to the same. Now, the township surrounding borough have, you know, have their own things, but Kish Park, the Dairy Township, Fink, and several others in Grandville and so on. Nothing in the borough, this is a unique property. I really appreciate your consideration, and I hope there is some way we can solve this.
If we look at the waterfront properties, do something just for waterfront properties, then we're also going to have to look at the people down along the towpath that own property that abut the river, correct?
Well, it would have to be one for all.
It would have to be one for everything, not just for the Sellers camp area.
I think you hear a lot of complaining if it weren't tied to all.
Yeah.
So it would have to be feasible for everyone.
I think we're opening a can of worms if we, if we do that, you know.
We can send it back to law and ordinance.
Maybe what Mr. Sellers has to do is get a camping permit.
I have one.
You have that?
He took care of that, yes.
Okay. In order to get that permit, I would assume you would also had to have the showers, the water, the whole thing. Is that right, Kim?
Well, the showers and stuff is based on the number of eight, he only has two, so that doesn't take effect on that. So what he's doing is okay.
It says or, yeah, or fraction of.
So Caitlin, as far as I know, that that ordinance, he's not breaking the ordinance because he only has the two campers, right?
Correct, well, he said he could have up to four or five camper sites. Right now, he only has the two.
Two returned it, yeah.
Yeah, but he said that the campers though, they do have showers internally.
Yeah.
So they would be okay that way as long as they're getting pumped out. And since he does have them on port-a-pot, that covers the tent sites theoretically, since they.
Yeah. Are we talking camper sites or camping sites?
Both.
Because, how many total camping, camping sites do you have, Doug?
There are a total of 10 sites.
10 sites.
At the present time. 10 driveways, 10 sites.
Okay.
10 sites marked out, not real visibly marked, but semi-marked. Also, the ones that are suitable for campers limit to, there's a sixth one maybe, maybe. I know four or five for sure, there might be a sixth one with a slight modification, another driveway, different access.
So now you're saying you're going to have six campers.
Maybe, up to six.
And then four tents.
I had it listed on my, I just didn't have that with me. Let's see, what do I have here? Oh yeah, camper craft, we're looking at the six suitable sites, I'm sorry.
Most of the people in the audience don't have a coffee, so that's why I wanted to.
Right, right.
Want to take it back to law and ordinance?
Yeah, we're going to take it back to law and ordinance.
All right, try to be there to answer any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Thank you very much. Yeah, to you, Joe.
All right, take it back to law and ordinance and march, do a deep dive.
The concerned agenda, have a motion to pass.
What are you going to motion?
Second. On favor? Aye. You going to turn it over to the borough manager now?
Thank you, Jeff, appreciate it. I'll be quick on these, because there's not a lot of details, but enough to keep you informed. First thing, 22 Ridge Road demolition, that's in progress. I believe the next property owner came in today to talk to codes about the repair of their wall, painting installation and stuff to get that, get that moving forward. So that is in progress. The Catherine Walnut Park is in progress, for those that didn't, haven't been up that way. We got some pictures here. Where is Catherine Walnut Park? There it is. So this is the aerial drone after the mulch and everything went in it today. Some more pictures, I'll just go through it pretty quickly. This is the area we have right here. Now, you'll see the bottom part, the sidewalk, we're going to replace the sidewalk, but we got to put the fence in first. Now, fence is kind of going to go along this way and up this way. It's not going to encompass the whole area, just enough that the balls and stuff don't go down that corner and cause a danger with the kids on the street. And then you have them working on it today, so you can see it's all leveled out before they put the mulch and stuff on there. So it's in play, it's supposed to be done by May, we'll definitely have it done way before then. So that is coming to fruition after about the last year and a half of discussing it. All right, 2022 delinquent taxes. Citizens slash property owners owe the borough about $160,000 at the close of 2022. That is what's, what's out there that still owed us. And there's some pretty hefty chunks of change from some of the landlords in town. Town Hall 2023, 23 Feb at 6:00 PM, Community Center, that's still on. We work on our flyer today to get that out advertised, we're working through social media, we're working through Jenny Landis and with Caitlin, getting all that information out to the public. Bottom line is, we have the county, we have FAME, we have MCMA, Fire Department, Police Department, numerous entities that are going to be at the brief, helping with the brief. Our mechanic position's still open, we've got maybe 15 applicants, but nobody qualified for an interview at this time. Digestor Grant Borough Commitment Letter, that was, that was one of the ones that came back with and asked for. We completed that last week, so we have no more issues on the Digestor Grant. The last thing was Dave and Becca helped today. They wanted our SAM.gov site renewed six months early, so that was active at the time they gave the awards in July or August. And they were able to do that, so everything else will be in play now for that grant for the Digestor. The good thing is, I have a good feeling about it, because they've come back to us with a bunch of emails and asked a bunch of questions, and got some more information, and there was no issues. So I have a good feeling for it. Updated 2023 committee roster, we have that updated, if you guys need it, let me know, we'll get that sent to you. The Rec Park Pool Grant RFP, so the request or proposal to the aquatic design firms has been mailed out to six of them, waiting for them to come back, I can't remember the deadline, I think it was April, April or May, to come back with their plan and what they want to do with the pool. So that's in the open. We had a meeting this afternoon with Venus, Aaron, Madeline Price, and DCNR. And I got a whole bunch of notes and stuff on the money that's available, et cetera. Some things that we could be looking at to make the pool better for the community this summer. We're also scheduled a meeting, they want to come up and do another walk-through sometime here in the next couple of months to, they got some additional money available that Venus and I asked about. They said, yeah, give us a call, we'll come up and do a walk through Rec Park and St. Long Victory Park, because there's some grants you can apply for, that we finally have money for, that we might be able to get some money for those. Let's see, Digestor Grant, yep, Digestor Grant we talked about. Ladder Truck and PPE Grants. So we are working a grant on the federal level for the ladder truck, we can request $1 million. We did get a letter of support today from Senator Ward's office as part of the packet. The only issue that may stop this from being submitted on a tent is the SAM.gov account for United Fire Department. They have to have their own SAM.gov account, it can't be the borough. And they're working through that now. And it's possible, we're trying to get a hold of Senator or the local legislative team to try to help us out with that. But that's not a lost case, because we still got to get the grant done. And when it opens up again in like nine months, we'll be ready to get it on the first day and go through the process. So it's not like it's all lost. Victory Park River Debris Grant, that is still being worked. I had engineers come in last week that are actually doing the same project, similar project on the Juniata River up by Raystown Lake. I contacted the Corps of Engineers, they said, we can't help you, contact the railroad. I called the railroad, they didn't even respond. Then Corps of Engineers said, call PUC. I emailed PUC, they said, not our problem, call DEP. So I got a hold of DEP, I'm still waiting to hear from DPE, because we already know county's not going to help. Let's see, Victory Pre, Borough Property Community Garden Area Open for Discussion. We had a discussion during the finance committee about the possibility of selling the area up by the funeral home, because we had the guy, the developer that was looking to develop Buchanan School, that deal may be falling through, they're looking at some property, Jim Zubler set a meeting with us, he came in and talked to us. And basically, the decision was, you know, it's not decided yet, it could be open for discussion here in the future. Just letting you guys know that we'll have another meeting whenever you guys want to discuss it. That's all, that's what it comes down to. Because we still don't know what we're doing with the police station yet, and we know that's one of the options that we have. And I'll just touch on that while I'm on here, the police station. So MCMA, so they got the appraisal back, but it's super secret school stuff, they won't let me know what it is. And they did tell me that they're thinking about putting the MCMA building possibly up for a public bid. But I got with Mark on that, and that's not required for them to do that. Municipal authorities can basically divest of their property however they see fit, especially going from another, one government entity to another government entity. So we don't know what their plans are right now, we're no further along than we were three or four months ago.
Refresh my memory as to when our lease runs up? We're in our third year.
Three years.
Three years.
Three more years?
We're in our third year now.
Two more years, so we're talking December 2025.
25.
It goes with 23, 24, yeah, December 25. Let's see, where was it? Parking Enforcement, 2023. We had some discussions during the finance committee meeting about parking, you know, and what, what it's doing financially, gains versus losses, et cetera. We kind of left that right now, you know, status quo. And when we have our town hall meeting in February here, later on this month, that's one of our subjects, we're just going to talk to the citizens, what do you guys think about parking meters in Lewis Town? I mean, what's your thoughts on parking meters? And we're leaving at that, see what they have to say. South Side Paving and ADA Ramps, I know Lucas and Sidney are here, the bottom line on that, they're putting plans together for that. It is going out to advertise real soon, bids are going to be due to us at the finance meeting in March. And then the council will vote on the award of the contract at the council meeting in April.
Where's this at, where is outside?
It's outside.
Where at?
Oh.
Yep.
Because we did some interviews.
I mean, yeah, we're finishing it.
Yeah, we did about half of them.
Okay.
So these are the remaining, so it's Washington, Lincoln, and then the last couple blocks down toward Green Gables.
And when we have our town hall, we're going to have a map that shows that for everybody.
And it's a combination of the rest of the ADA ramps plus the rest of the paving. So a majority of it's funded through your CBD allocation in the county, and the rest will be liquid fuels that cover the paving.
We've been saving it up for a while, a couple of years, Venus, so we had enough to cover it also. And when we go to town hall, we'll have these maps ready for council, it's going to have everything on there for them to read and see. I think that was the last thing for me right now, so next thing is fire.
Okay, Bob, you're on.
Thank you. In the month of January, Fire Department responded to 40 incidents, six building fires. Okay, one of those building fires is down on South Charles Street, or East Charles Street, which I touched on a little bit at the last meeting. We had a lot of property destroyed, we had 14 people relocated, we had two dogs die in the incident. At that time, I reported the fire marshal was leaning towards accidental, and he was thinking about a pellet stove at the time. I haven't got the final report yet. Caitlin, can you help me out there? Did the marshal come up with that?
We have not received official word. He's waiting until the building is demoed to retrieve said pellet stove, just to verify, but he is leaning toward that direction.
Do we have a date for demolition?
So we are waiting to receive the fire escrow check, which will probably be next week. And then they're going to start demo, they'll leave it, because they're going to go with GNR, so it'll have to be fixed and scheduled. So it'll probably be a couple of weeks out.
Okay, so that's the update on the building fire down Charles Street. We had two cooking fires, one camper fire, a brush fire, five medical assists, four motor vehicle accidents with injuries, we had one with entrapment, which rescue had to extricate the driver from the vehicle. We had two water and ice related rescues. We had a guy in the river down the Juniata County side. We also, the day of the high waters, we had a guy trying to take his Jeep across the creek, and he didn't make it. We had to get him and pull him out of there. We also had a gas leak, which, once again, called the gas company, and it was an active gas leak, they took care of it. We had a carbon monoxide. We had a carbon monoxide incident, we had a... We had a call out on Oakland Avenue, and when we get out there, our meters was showing twelve parts per million as far as carbon monoxide. So we notified the gas company immediately and the code's office. The gas company come in, they done their thing, they checked with their meters, and they red-tagged it immediately. And the furnace was shut off for the night, that's where it's gone out at. And that was turned over to codes, and they took care of it, made sure everything was taken care of before it was restarted. Once again, we performed two lockouts, where people locked their kids in the cars at Walmart. We had a couple floodings, we had two of those with broken water pipes. We had a steam leak. We had two standby assignments for mutual aid for out of town companies. And we had a odor of smoke, which we did not find anything, and we had three automatic alarms. Also, in the past month, members of the Fire Department's been working with Kim and the Fire Committee here, as far as Kim announced a while ago, getting the information ready for the grant, reports on the consolidation. And I do wanna take it in behalf of the Fire Department to thank council for reaching out and helping us financially. Guy's been a lot of work for us here, come up with some ideas. Same as a lot of extra work, which is definitely appreciated very much. You're gonna help us remain a good fire department, so I just wanna say thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anything you don't respond to?
We did it all, buddy, we did it all.
Due to an error on my part, I didn't turn in my fourth quarter for my wedding, and also the end of the year report. I was a little busy last month and didn't get a chance to do it, so I do have it here. Cause my husband... You have any questions on those, just let me know. A couple weeks ago, I got a call from the United States Congressman John Joyce's office, and they were coming to our area, had requested to meet with the chief and I. And I don't know if you've seen any of the literature out with John Joyce, he is actually a medical physician, and we found him to be very, very accommodating. I mean, we met with him down in my office for quite a long conversation. He was very impressed with the Police Department, and the fact that the co-responder, he hadn't heard of that program, and he was really interested in it. And to know that he initiated, the chief initiated, was a plus also for us. He's more than willing to, he said, anything you need, you know, come to me. He said, if I can't do it, you know, I'll try to find somebody that can. And we were very pleased with him, we took him downtown, went to the Historic Courthouse, and introduced him to the girls there, and took him up to the courtroom, and they were just amazed, they were taking pictures, and they just thought it was awesome. And then we walked downtown, they made comment after comment about how beautiful our town is. And we took him into the coffee shop, and he thought that was a cool place too. So we had a very, very good time with them. We had a short amount of time because they were going down to Juniata County, but, you know, we had made the best of the time that we were together. I wanted to mention too, Senator Judy Ward, who took Jake Corman's place. They're relocating down to the Montgomery Ward Building from the Third Street Office, and they're going to be having a ribbon cutting on the 24th of February, and that would be at 11 o'clock. So if any of you are around and would wanna attend, I'm sure she'd appreciate it. We have also met with her, and she is wonderful. I mean, I'm sure that she'll do a lot for our area, and we're really pleased.
I'll tell you, most, a lot of politicians don't respond, and no offense, Mayor, but it's just the way it is, because they're busy. But I can tell you, in both cases, when I've emailed her and her staff, I got immediate responses. I sent an email yesterday asking for letter support, I got one, give us the basics, we'll have it tomorrow. So both times, her office has been really, really helpful for us.
That's great, that's great. I've had a couple events with her, and she is very personable. You wouldn't be afraid to go to her for anything, and she too is willing to see that we, you know, get what we need in our area, so I'm really happy to have her.
24th of Feb, what time?
It's 11 o'clock. The only other thing I wanted to mention, we have an opening in the Police Advisory Board. One of our members have relocated out of the borough, so she's not eligible to attend. So if you know of anybody that might be interested in doing that, we meet quarterly. It's only one meeting every quarter, and I think they'd find it very interesting, the ones we have on there, really enjoy it. So if anybody is able to find somebody that might wanna do it, they'll need to contact me. I have the applications, and I'd be happy to help them out with it, so. Okay, any questions, done anything? Oh yeah, I forgot that, thank you. When we met with John Joyce and his assistant, they said that they're going to put an office here in Lewis Town also, and they're looking at Montgomery Ward Building, and they were hoping to be in on February, and I've been with municipal government now here for quite a while, and I don't remember ever having a US Congressperson with an office downtown, so that'll be a plus also. Thanks for your time.
Police Chief?
Okay, stats for January, five hundred and ten calls for service, forty-three traffic sites, thirteen non-traffic, and fifty-five warnings for drug narcotics officer position. One new investigation, he's doing five total investigations at this time. He made one felony arrest, four misdemeanor arrests, did two search warrants, seized approximately a gram of heroin and fentanyl, three grams of methamphetamine, and a gram of crack cocaine. They also had a case from last year that resulted in a federal indictment in January of this year for methamphetamine and distribution and gun charges for that. So that's what he was doing. I don't know if you wanna discuss the incentive plan, you wanna do that now, or?
You can, I mean, that doesn't have to go to executive session, it's a money issue, so it's open.
So we mentioned last meeting, we were working on a, we wanted to work on an incentive plan for new hires to offer some kind of incentive for applicants, because us as well as many other departments have been struggling to get enough applicants. So I sat down with the mayor and Lacy, our HR Director, and I think Kim was in the loop on this too, but we come up with an incentive plan, basically to reimburse for tuition for new officer applicants. Looking at the cost, it's generally around six thousand dollars for Act 120 Police Academy. That's the current rate for most of the academies right now. So we're looking at offering an incentive to reimburse that tuition for new hires, and they have to meet certain conditions in order to get that reimbursement. And I don't, do you have a copy of this that you can put up, or not?
Yeah, I have the draft copy. I actually took that also and sent that to Mark for him to review, because it's a legal document for the borough, and there's another, who has it, you said the school, or somebody has one?
Yeah, we have some school district clients that do similar things, or teachers, so I'll kinda look at those.
For now, we just wanted to get the basics down, so we could at least advertise it. If we need to tweak it at some point, you know, it probably wouldn't really go into effect until after our next testing period, so. But if we can get the basic...
Yeah, Lacy worked this out and did a great job on it.
So you can look at some of the guidelines in order then, for, in order for them to get the reimbursement. Obviously, they must provide documentation, they completed the academy and it has to be within the past year, so we're not gonna hire somebody that has five or 10 years' experience and expect us to pay for their tuition, you know. So it's for new hires, new officers, either currently in the academy or graduated within the past year, and that's prior to application. Of course, they must provide their statement. And they must sign a three-year term contract, basically saying that they'll stay with the borough for at least three years.
I changed this, it was twenty-five miles, Lacy had changed it to sixty, because twenty-five miles is not far enough to try to, you know, I added it to sixty, that's why.
What happens if they leave?
That's a breach of the contract, they're expected to pay the money back. We're looking at, we wouldn't actually even pay the tuition until they complete their first year probationary period. So they must successfully complete their probationary period. Then the borough would pay the tuition. Like I said, if they leave before the three years, or they breach the contract, then they would be responsible to pay it back, and that's in the contract.
And Jim, sorry, Mark has that now for review, so we can get back to us on something.
So that's the basics of it, we're looking, it's, like I said, approximately six thousand dollars, and we put in there up to six thousand in case some schools might be a little cheaper than the six thousand, but...
They've been there, when the borough pays it, are we paying the officer? Or are we paying the institution?
I think, I think it's in there, it would go to the, it wouldn't go directly to the officer, it would go to, who are they having to loan through? And we pay it directly to the...
Unless they can show proof the loan's paid, then we just reimburse that.
Yeah, if they already paid for it, that's one thing.
Well, wait, if they've already, if they have a loan, and we're not gonna reimburse them until the first year, are we gonna reimburse them the entire amount?
Interest done.
Yes.
Well, not six thousand. Not a, I don't know, yeah.
Up to six thousand.
Up to whatever the school charged.
That's my question, because if I've already paid on it for a year, I would've paid some off.
Yeah, you get reimbursed for that when you paid.
That's sort of my question.
Yeah, you get reimbursed when you pay, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Because then you are gonna be paying some of the individual. Right.
I mean, yeah, and usually you don't even have to start paying until after six months, after you graduate, so.
It changes so much.
They may only be paying for a few months before, you know, as long as they're successful in their probationary period. You aren't talking, you know, a lot of money they're gonna have to go out until they're actually reimbursed, so.
Hey Chief, when you said you get five hundred and ten service calls, is that just dispatch calls?
It could be self-initiated too, if officers initiate a call or a traffic stop.
Alright, so it's all called.
Self-initiated things as well.
Any other questions for Dave?
What we're hoping to do is get some kind of approval, so we can at least advertise, we'd like to advertise for a test, a civil service test. We need to do that soon because of our manpower situation, so. We'd like to include this in our advertisement, that this is something that we're going to offer, so.
I'd like to wait till we have the turnaround.
I mean, if you can conditionally approve it based on staff and legal review, like I said, it's a two-page document, it's not a legal...
We wouldn't advertise any of the details, it'd be pretty much, we're offering incentives of up to six thousand dollars in tuition reimbursement. But I don't wanna put that out there if we're not inclined to do it, so. And that's basically all I want approval for at this point, we can tweak the documents.
Yeah, I make a motion to go ahead and approve the advertisement of up to a six thousand dollar reimbursement.
Who's the second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passed.
Thank you. That's all I have for now, I have some executive session.
Recreation Board?
Yeah, okay, we had the Recreation Board meeting last night. We only had several people show up, we didn't have a forum, but we still went through with the meeting. And basically, what we went through is what's in front of you, the HRG plan that they're gonna brief you on at the Town Hall meeting. Basically, that's a plan that's been put together by county to install a 1.5 mile long trail, ten feet wide, basically from Victory Park all the way down to, what's that, Stone Arch Bridge Park. And that's what they're gonna talk to you about. Now, the things they talked about last night is, they want the borough, as I understand, they want the borough to be the ones requesting the grant. And I said, well, no, because we have to provide a match, and they said, well, maybe county can help you with that. And I said, who's gonna be responsible for maintenance, and they said, well, the borough will be responsible for maintenance. So there's a lot of good things you're gonna be hearing about at the Town Hall meeting when they discuss this.
But they don't wanna give us any ARPA money.
But they do wanna give us any ARPA money, so. So you're gonna be hearing this, this is the plan the county put together. First I heard of it was when I went to the County Planning Commission with Aaron about, what, two weeks ago? That's the first I heard of it.
It's been in the works for a while.
Maybe this piece right here? Okay, so the other thing they want us to do is contact all the property owners, like me, contact the property owners and discuss the possibility of getting an easement through the property, or buying the property or something, so this trail can go through. So I have it on my to-do list on page 475, so I'll get to it eventually.
Well, that's gonna affect every seller.
No, he's in the side of the road, he's in the side highway. So that's it for the rec work.
Martha Sullister, Bart?
Thank you. It's kinda continuing on the open burning theme that we visited earlier. As you know, you have your pending lawsuit filed by Mr. Stilp regarding the borough's open burning ordinances and his assertions that it's unconstitutional because it doesn't provide for burning for political speech. And, you know, I think as we've discussed, there is certainly legal precedent that burning of flags is an acceptable form of political speech, according to the Supreme Court, no matter what we ourselves might think about it, it's a kind of decided issue up there. So, your insurance carrier has reached a tentative agreement with Mr. Stilp, which would have the insurance company writing him a check. The only thing that's really required from the borough is passing a amendment to your ordinance to provide for some political flag burning type provisions to the ordinance, and it just kinda says that you can do it, and that there's supposed to be a permit given by the borough, and it sets for some parameters, like you have to have a burn container and a fire extinguisher, and those sort of things. So the recommendation from your carrier is to go ahead with this settlement and resolve this issue. And I think, I think the proposed ordinance went around with the meeting packet, so. That's based on Middleburg's ordinance that they enacted in response to a similar lawsuit about a similar situation with Mr. Stilp, I think on the same day that he was here. I think he was, Mifflin Town too, I think, is dealing with it, so, yeah, so it was a busy day for the system.
So what do you need for most, Mark?
Authorization to advertise it for adoption.
I'll make a motion to authorize.
What was the settlement for?
The dollar amount?
Yeah.
Six thousand.
He got, he was awarded six thousand?
Insurance company.
And that's just here, you gotta figure, there's...
Twelve thousand?
Six thousand.
And he sued multiple...
Multiple, multiple things. Yep, this is his business.
And we don't honor that, what happens then?
Well, then you could reject it. Your insurance company's defending you under a reservation of rights, which basically means that if there would be a judgment in excess of what they've already offered, it would be up to the borough to pay it.
Yep, I don't like it either, but what are you doing, so?
Do you want the first and the second?
No, we didn't have a second.
Okay. I second it.
No, you can, you can if you step down. Not just for the moment. You can step down, you can second it.
Aaron?
Thank you.
My second.
There's no. What we, I mean, what do you, what's your, I hate just to say make it go away, but what's your?
I mean, what the changes say is all true and correct, that flag burning's political speech, that if you can do it in a way that is, you know, doesn't endanger public safety, then it's allowed.
I'm all for him even doing it. I don't, I mean, I love the flag, but if that guy wants to do it, that's why we fought for it. I don't want to give him six thousand dollars because he thinks he needs to do it. I don't understand.
The insurance companies.
I don't get that.
We're not.
We're not.
The insurance companies.
Okay.
The insurance company pays the six thousand, we adjust the ordinance, it's done deal.
If we don't adjust the ordinance and he's suggesting more, if the insurance company says we're not paying for it, you are.
And basically, the ordinance is like he says, you can say, "Yeah, you can burn a flag, but you got to get a permit through the code office first. You got to have a burn container, you got to have something to put the fire out with." So there's some rules to it. You can do it, but there's more rules to it.
Is there a listing we can get our hands on of other burrows that don't have the same ordinance so we can go and get some money?
We'll work on that.
I had something, do you have a count?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Well, I was involved in that incident that day. As fire chief, I was asked to get out. He was permitted to light these flag on fire. And as soon, he put it in a garbage can, lit the flag. As soon as he done that, I had one of the guys from the fire department put the fire out because at that time he was just a bad bark cave with no burn.
So the fire department cost us six thousand dollars.
And he was, he was permitted to go ahead and light it.
But it wasn't just the Ameri, he had several flags.
It was not an American flag. It was a Nazi swastika flag, a southern battle, battle flag, stars and bars, and a Donald Trump MAGA flag all sewn together.
So he couldn't decide what he was protesting.
What, what that statement really means is up for debate.
That's the burnt flags going.
I think we ought to just pay it, let them pay it, pass the ordinance.
We have a second, first and second.
All in favor?
Reluctantly, aye.
Do you want to do roll call?
Roll call. Robert Hammond.
Yep.
Nelson Reeffanak.
No.
Larry Seer.
No.
Venus Shade.
Yep.
Jim Steele.
Yes.
Aaron Wilson.
Yes.
Bill Wilson.
No.
Four to three in favor of.
All right, I'll advertise that for, for adoption with the insurance company. That's all I have, thank you.
Unfinished business and new business.
Okay, the first thing on here is a Pennsylvania one called April Safe Digging Month Resolution. Now whether you guys want to do this or not, that's your call. Let me find it on here. They sent it out to all the communities and stuff that they would like to make April the timeframe where, you know, we practice safe digging and stuff, which we do every single day. And then they gave us a template. See you, Lucas. They gave us a sample resolution that you would pass. We just generate up on our paperwork and stuff and do it. I feel I'll get his borough manager, ask council if they want to do it or not. It's up to you guys.
We have to advertise it or anything?
No, we just do it as a resolution for the borough, you know. We can put it on the website.
I'll make a motion.
I'll suck it out.
I'm going to find this. Oh, here, here it is. And we'll just have Mark generate up on the ready paperwork and stuff, and then we'll sign it this week or next week.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't we get a chance to say no?
Oh, anybody say no?
No.
I thought you said, yes. I don't even have a. Sorry.
All right, back to the agenda. Somewhere on here. Next thing around here. This is CDGBCV New Visions Quote Approval. Basically, you guys approved the fair share for all this stuff last year. Their quotes finally came in, so it's just a matter of the council approving the quote. I talked to Chastity about it, and that's all it is, just you guys approving it. It doesn't come out of our fair share that we already have for the parking stuff. This is just a procedure that has to be done through CDGBG. So you have to vote to approve it or disapprove it. All right, my approval, because it's already pretty much.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, any noes? Okay, pass.
All right, bucket truck repair. So our bucket truck, you wonder why, like, some of ours, well, I can't see that the, the snowflakes are up because of the bucket truck. I, they're up because I told them to stay up. But we can't take them down until we get the bucket truck fixed. But the bucket truck went in for repairs on the engine. We took it to two or three different places. We finally went to Bowersocks, I think that's where it's at. And they had to take the engine apart to find out what it was, and it's a cracked head. So we couldn't put the engine back together and take it somewhere else for a quote, so I just told them to fix it because that's where it's at, and that's what the bill is right there. It's supposed to be done today or tomorrow. So I just need the approval to pay them for fixing our bucket truck.
Motion. Show them a move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
All right, bank account consolidation. Summer, you want to cover this, or you want me to?
You can just read it off.
We don't bite, Summer.
No. I got it in here. Let me find it, please. Trigger. Bank account consolidation. All right. I want to dissolve these accounts here. Transfer, you can see transfer remaining funds to this one over here. So basically, we got accounts we don't use, we haven't used in a number of years. And so she's trying to, I guess, streamline and minimize the amount of accounts we have. So we want to consolidate some and merge them into other ones that serve the same purpose. I think there's only a couple on here.
We talked about the research and there's, are okay to clear?
Yeah.
No big deal. Make a motion to consolidate.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I got a question here. Is this, is this in balancing the budget out?
I don't understand the question.
Well, you know, Frank Barryer come in and said we didn't have the budget balanced.
He did. He came in and said it's balanced, but with what we had to work with, he's correct. It's not balanced to the penny. But it's balanced enough that with what we had, with a brand-new treasurer, that we can work it to the rest of the year, till we get towards the end of the year with stuff like this, then we can get the account balanced on stuff. Does that make sense? I mean, so is there money in the accounts? Yes. Does it look like we're going to be shortfalls in some areas? Yes. We're being very stingy on stuff, I can tell you that, when we need things. But yes, is there money in the accounts? Is it possibly going to cover everything? Maybe not. That's why we're being very stingy. There, there's things at play here. Have you, that's a good question. There's things at play here that, that we just found out. Like, we had a meeting yesterday for the wastewater treatment plant. I wish Lucas wasn't left, but. I contacted Eads to have them come in and discuss the wastewater treatment plant sewer rates, you know, that we send out to everybody. Because they really haven't been done, I won't say correctly, they haven't been done to the depth they need to be done for years. And so as we worked through this, one of the things that came up was the rates that were charged in, like, Lewistown Hospital, Geisinger Hospital, okay? And I asked, "Where do these rates come from?" And they go, "I don't know." So I got ahold of Don. I said, "Don, where do these rates come from?" He goes, "The intermunicipal agreement." I said, "You mean the rates that were set in 1982?" "Yeah, those ones." We haven't raised our rates since 1982 on some of this stuff. That's how far behind we are on some of this stuff with the budget. And that's what she's trying to do, is fix all that. So that's one of the things with the cost and fee, and that's why Eads is going through redoing our sewer rates, because they haven't been done properly for years. Because, well, Diana was doing them, you know. But we got the engineers doing them now. And now that that stuff's brought to our attention, we're going to get it fixed.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's why we're trying to, this is a step-by-step process. That's a, that's a good question. That's why we want to do this.
Okay.
I think there was a company that came in here and adjusted the sewer rates just a few years ago. Scott was still, Scott Wellman was still here, but I thought there was a company that came in and, and adjusted those.
Not for, like, intermunicipal agreements.
Can I clarify? They're not talking about the sewer rates for the borough, Deb. They're talking about what we do, grow, build, and dairy township.
Oh, out of the.
Yes, for their usage.
Okay.
All right. The next one I got here, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is anybody against it?
Oh, wait, that's great, go ahead.
Uh, do we, do we have first or second?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
All right, number five, I want to hold off on this. Basically, the, the finance committee, we discussed it to bring it up to discuss the, the council, but I don't think I'm ready to ask for approval yet. Because we want to talk about helping the fire department with the refuse water internet sewer bills paid by the borough through the specialty tax. And there's a couple of reasons that I'm not moving forward on this. And one of them is, let me find a Comcast bill on here. Down, 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 where is it at? Community facility Comcast, right there. All right, so I got ahold of Comcast and said, "What's their bills down there?" And this is what it is. So Brooklyn is paying three hundred and nineteen dollars a month for internet, and City's paying two. So that's five hundred dollars a month. That's five or six thousand dollars a year for internet, for a fire department. That doesn't even make sense. So I got Scott Faulkner involved in this now, and I'm going to give a Comcast. I got lunch with him coming up like tomorrow, next week or something, to get this fixed, because this is not right. So I want to get all these numbers adjusted and corrected and all that stuff before, even through the fire department committee, before next month when I bring this back to you guys. You guys have accurate data on all this stuff, because it is not right.
Yeah, there. Comcast provides a limited number of free hookups to, like, the borough and the police station, I think, under the cable agreement. And fire companies may be ineligible, so we need to pull that out in the look, because I know Comcast has agreed to provide, like I said, some.
Oh, that's for public safety stuff, okay. That's why I'm doing lunch with them. Besides, he pays. He pays. So I'm holding off on that stuff right now, okay? Because I don't want you guys to vote on something that, that's stupid, you know, so. The idea is there, and I think it's a good idea, but I think that we need to get it right. And the last thing on here is the Gannett Fleming bill for a dialer. I want to show you what this thing is. PA1 digester, where's the dialer? All right, here's the bill, I want to show it to you. This is why I'm pissed. So I'm getting ready to write the letter, Gannett Fleming. And I've already talked to Eads about taking over the sewer tran, sewer treatment plant engineer time or system as our engineers on one January. Here's the bill. Thirty-five hundred dollars for the dialer, five thousand dollars for one day to install it. Okay? That, that's ridiculous. I mean, absolutely ridiculous. So, but let me, I'm going to show you what it is here in a second. It's this little box. It's not very big, but they want five thousand dollars just to hook that up.
He didn't have to rewire it, did he?
No, it should be plug and play. Look, you can pull it out and, you know.
Right.
Even if, even if it took him a day, five thousand dollars.
I know.
He should be burning flags instead, he'd get sent.
Every day, right?
So they, they need this replaced.
A couple a day.
And so I need permission to spend the twelve thousand five hundred on it, because we need to have it. Because what the dialer system does is if there's an issue at the plant after hours, that's what calls us, emergency people, that there's an issue. Without that, we don't have that. So that's why we got to get it fixed. So I need that approval to spend the money for that.
I make a motion to pay for it.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And I'm moving forward with Eads to become our, I've talked to our super treatment engineers, and they're really good. So I don't think we're going to have a problem with them, because they're local, they're here, better than dealing with these guys, so. I think that was the last thing I had, Mr. President.
Any public comments?
Yeah, just ask anybody who needs executive session. Are they dating?
We're going to go into executive session now.